At a later meeting. Attachment number five, page 10. Second from the bottom, Allison Urban. As a minor date change, the date was incorrect. The correct date should read 12/14/2017. And the other item that we need to speak about. Due to a family emergency, Mr. Schwartzbaum cannot attend tonight's meeting. I suggest that we should table the vote on the superintendent's contract. Due to my conflict, I must stay out of the motion, so colleagues have anything?
I'll second.
Mr. Calvado, do we vote?
Mr. Alper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
I must abstain. So we're removing the vote for superintendent's contract off the agenda for a later meeting in the year. What that means is tonight, the public will be allowed to speak on the contract at the end. Now it's not an agenda item. We'll reserve those comments for at the end of the meeting.
Or they can wait till February 12th.
Or wait till the following meeting, yes, correct.
February 12th.
So, okay, Mr. Calvado, Mr. Rutske, superintendent's report?
President Charles, before you begin, before you turn it over to Superintendent Rutske, we have to approve the public meeting minutes.
Okay, let's move that.
Yeah, that's right.
The public meeting minutes for November 27th, December 18th, January 8th, and January 10th. I need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Okay. All in favor?
I'll abstain, actually, well, 8th and 10th were in public.
Okay.
I have to abstain from the 2017 ones.
Yeah, obviously, that's good. Okay. So we move the, just for clarification, we move the public meeting minutes, we table the closed meeting minutes.
Right. And I'll abstain from, because you open and open, and then go to close, I'll abstain from the 10th.
Absolutely. Okay. Mr. Rutske, superintendent's report?
Thank you. We have two presentations tonight. We're going to go through the action plan for the special ed audit. Ms. Gogrdi will lead us through that. Then we're going to have a presentation about a STEM camp proposal from Mr. Del Gersio. And we're going to discuss next year's calendar. If you agree with the draft, we will put it on the next meeting and approve it. We're also going to discuss some parking lot fees. It was brought to my attention from two board members to go ahead and look at possibly fees for individuals that may use the parking lots. We have the member in agreement between the education and law enforcement officials, which we need to approve, and then the typical HIB athletic report. So if I can ask the board members to just have a seat in the audience. Ms. Gogrdi will get things ready to go as far as the presentation.
My name is Kristin Gogrdi. I'm the Director of Special Services in West Orange. As Mr. Rutske shared, I'm going to be presenting the Special Education Action Plan that was developed based on an audit that was conducted by an outside agency. The audit was conducted last year into this year by Bryant, Gemza, Kinoi, and Kozlik. For those of you who are not familiar with what the audit entailed, I would like to share some information about that. The audit included some interviews with school administration, special education administration, child study team, related service providers, special education teachers across grade spans, school counselors, paraprofessionals, and parents. Within the audit, the auditors conducted a review of district programs by building as well as district comparisons. They obtained feedback from parents during an open parents' meeting that was held early September. There were surveys that were completed across the district by parents, our staff members, building administrators, district-level administrators, as well as paraprofessionals. And they also conducted a record review where they reviewed random 111 CST files and looked at compliance areas. So based on the feedback from the audit, we developed an action plan, which I'm going to present to you now. So our first goal looks at the instructional program. The overarching goal is to enhance the instructional program and resources to meet the individualized needs of special education students in pre-K to grade 12. Within the audit, a common theme that emerged was the need for the establishment of a curriculum specifically for students placed in the self-contained autism program. So in response, the following objective was developed: to research and establish effective and appropriate assessments, instructional programs, and resources to meet the individualized needs of students with autism. So some of the activities that will fall under this overarching objective would be to develop a program philosophy, research effective instructional programs and effective assessment practices, develop a comprehensive transition framework, expand community-based experiences and daily living activities with a focus being at the elementary level. We currently have community-based and daily living activities in place at our secondary, our middle school and high school level, so we do want to place an emphasis at bringing this down to the elementary level. And ultimately, over the course of the three years, we want to develop a comprehensive curriculum, which is aligned to the program philosophy that is developed. Moving into the second objective that falls under this goal, we are looking to develop a comprehensive K-12 curriculum to meet the needs of the students placed in the Intellectual Disabilities Program. So this was another common theme that emerged where there's a need for a curriculum within that program. So again, the activities will be to develop a program philosophy, look at some effective assessment practices, and consider the developmental needs of the students. And again, the end activity would be to develop a comprehensive curriculum aligned to the program philosophy, and that would span over this year and next year. So in looking at Objective 1 and Objective 2 under the Goal 1, we're starting the work this year and will continue it into next year as well. The third objective in Goal 1 is to evaluate district programs, instructional practices, resources, and the professional development structure to ensure the needs of all students are met. So to accomplish this, we're going to evaluate the special ed program options and availability by location. So in looking at this point, we have to be realistic in that we, it's very difficult to provide every special ed program in every building, so we really have to evaluate the IEP needs, the demand of the program, and, you know, evaluate how we're delivering it by building. Ensure alignment between proposed program is outlined in the IEP and the district instructional model, so making sure that the IEPs are accurately reflecting the instructional minutes as outlined by the district. Developing a framework for the delivery of Orton-Gillingham instruction across the district. Identify child study team evaluation model and evaluate the need for support options in world language classes. And I just want to discuss the word "support" here in that we have to, when I say evaluate the support, we have to look at, does support mean staff? Does support mean, you know, including things within the instructional component? You know, I can use an example of, we can place a para in a world language class, but if the para is not familiar with that language, are they really going to be able to support the students? Or can we provide PD where we can embed a level of support into the instruction that will meet the needs of the students to acquire a new language? Some additional activities that fall under Objective 3 are to examine the current extended school year program and look to see how we can improve upon the program. Explore research-based reading programs at the middle school level specifically for struggling readers. Currently, our middle school, the time allocated in language arts is 55 minutes, so we would want to work within that instructional model to see how we can explore different supports and programs to meet the needs of students who, you know, have significant struggle in the area of reading. And continue to provide professional targeted educational opportunities to teachers, and some of the PD examples are within this activity. The one I just want to emphasize that the district has placed an emphasis on, and we will continue to emphasize, is co-teaching. About four years ago, we had an outside consultant, Linda Fodi, come in, and she provided PD to our co-teaching pairs. So we had the general education teachers and the special education teachers. She provided a twofold training. The first day involved, you know, a review of the models and with an emphasis on differentiated instructional activities. And the second day was a full day of PD on differentiated instructional activities across content areas. She also visited various co-teaching classrooms across the district. It was non-evaluative. She, you know, went in, met with the co-teaching pairs, and gave feedback to them, informally provided them with resources and strategies. So that's something that we want to continue to work towards. Moving into Goal 2, it focuses on process and communication. So the overarching goal is to clarify and refine department processes and procedures to ensure compliance and quality assurance, as well as maximize proactive transparent So I'm going to focus on, I'm going to first go over the objective, and I'm going to focus on two critical areas. The objective is to create a detailed special services procedures manual and corresponding training and advisory documents to outline department procedures and ensure compliance with all legal regulations and improve quality assurance across the district. So the critical elements here, the focus is to develop a special services procedures manual. At this time, we developed a special services procedures manual committee. It's comprised of child study team members, including learning consultants, school psychologists, school social workers, speech therapists, occupational therapists, and our district BCBAs. The initial work that was done by the committee was they reviewed the previous special services manual that was in place in the district many years ago. And I was able to obtain the special services manual that was developed by the Morris Union Jointure Commission, as well as another local area school district. So the team worked to look at the various manuals to see what are areas of strength, what are things that maybe the manual is missing that we want to make sure we include. So now, based on that committee, we also have subgroups that are multidisciplinary, and they're doing a lot of the work to now move forward in developing the manual. So we will be meeting throughout the year, checking in, and hopefully we will have a version one. The goal is by the end of this year, so that's our aim. And then taking it a step further, some feedback from the audit was to formulate and disseminate training and advisory documents to staff in the district. So looking at determining eligibility, writing a defensible IEP, the assignment and use of paraprofessionals, least restrictive environment, inclusion. And the feedback through the audit shared that this would be helpful for not only staff in our department, but staff outside of our department that might not be as familiar with, you know, special services and could be used as a support for staff across the district. So just to go over some additional activities here quickly, some other activities involve procedures for assigning paraprofessionals, continuing to ensure the implementation of modifications specifically in related arts classes, establish an accountability system to monitor student progress, establish an effective filing system, and provide targeted educational opportunities to general ed teachers. The second objective in Goal 2 is to establish and implement communication procedures to facilitate effective communication with parents' guardians. Within this objective, there were several activities that were developed based on feedback that was provided by our West Orange Special Education Parent Advisory Council, so I'm going to use the acronym CPAC. So the first two activities focus on a monthly meeting schedule for the parent advisory council, as well as multiple methods of communication. So we really worked this year with the Chair of CPAC to establish a monthly meeting schedule to disseminate it, based on the dates that we selected. I worked with the building principals to offer their buildings, so we can expand where the activities are held, looking at the format of how the events are being delivered, general meetings some months, educational events for parents in the community other months. Additionally, looking at the second activity, multiple methods of communicating the events. Again, this has been another tremendous area of focus. Typically, the CPAC Chair or the Board will send the flyers, and we've been trying to disseminate them multiple methods. So via backpack through the building principals, posting it on the district website, the Who CPAC website, also using social media. And I just want to emphasize the added district parents and guardians. That was a concern that came up, that they weren't receiving the information. So the special services department has been doing a hard copy mailing directly to the parents and guardians of students placed in added district settings. Moving into the third activity, provide timely communication to parents and staff, you know, really working to have a proactive approach. So if we know that a staff member is going to be out on leave, or a staff member is going to be out, you know, for an extended period of time due to an illness, communicating that information to parents so they're made aware, and, you know, as well as how we're going to be accommodating the needs of the students. Improve communication procedures for parents' guardians of special education students, particularly when transportation issues arise, and providing educational opportunities to parents' guardians as well. Goal 3 looks at staffing roles and responsibilities. The goal is to maximize, understand, and communicate the proper use of staff via projections, placement, and roles and responsibilities. The first objective is to clarify and monitor staff roles and responsibilities via articulation documents, professional development, and staff observation. So the first activity looks at providing professional development to paraprofessionals and understanding the components of an IEP. The second area looks at providing, you know, targeted PD that deals with facilitating student learning using appropriate techniques and strategies. And I just want to touch upon this for a second. In October, we had a district-wide PD, and, you know, we wanted to really make it meaningful for the paraprofessionals, and it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. We have paraprofessionals that are placed in self-contained classes supporting students, as well as resource classes and inclusion classes, so really, you know, making an effort to differentiate it to some degree. So we had some paraprofessionals that were trained in crisis prevention intervention, you know, if they're working primarily with students that have more behavioral needs and require de-escalation strategies. And then we had two larger groups of paras at the elementary and secondary that had the opportunity to attend two sessions, one that focused on paraprofessional expectations and applied behavior analysis, behavioral techniques, and the other to support students using Google Classroom. And lastly, in this particular objective, looking at providing PD to building principals specific to the roles and responsibilities of child study team members. Objective 2 looks at evaluating the staff structure within the special services department to identify efficiencies and maximize the assignment of staff members to support student learning. The first activity here is to assign informal mentors to new child study team members and related service providers, which is something that's done at the beginning of the year. And certainly, if we have a staff member that starts mid-year, we would ensure that that staff member is assigned an informal mentor within the district. Evaluate the staff structure specific to the ratio of child study team members and related service providers, looking at the support structure, including the ratio of paras, and refine the process for utilizing our district BCBAs. Goal 4 targets IEP development and compliance. The overarching goal here is to enhance knowledge and understanding of components of special education legal mandates and individualized education programs to make thoughtful decisions and develop legally compliant IEPs. So as I previously shared, one component of the audit was a record review, and, you know, within the full audit report, based on the record review, there were multiple areas of non-compliance. Those areas ranged, you know, they varied in percentage, but it's certainly an area that does require attention and remediation. So this objective includes to develop a professional development structure to solidify understanding of special ed law, how to write comprehensive present levels of academic achievement and functional performance statements, and how to develop legally compliant IEPs. So this goal, a lot of the activities are heavy in professional development. The first area is providing comprehensive training to child study team members with a focus on determining eligibility for specific learning disability, communication impairment, and multiple disabilities. The second one are providing PD to document the need for a paraprofessional and when appropriate supports to fade that out. Targeted professional development for teachers specific to writing a comprehensive present level. Within the audit, they reference that a good PLAF, which is the acronym, should meet the stranger test. So a stranger that is reading the IEP should be able to read the present levels and have a solid understanding of that student and what the student's strengths are and what their areas in need of improvement are. So that's something that we have provided PD on, and it's an area that we will continue to provide PD on and really monitor to make sure that our IEPs are meeting the stranger test. Additionally, some additional activities are focused PD for building principals around special ed law, and certainly reinforcing legal updates and critical elements of the IEP writing process for CST and speech therapists. The final goal is intervention and referral. The overarching goal is to evaluate the current intervention and referral services process for consistency and effectiveness. So this goal and objective will require collaboration between the special services department, as well as the school counseling department. The objective is to evaluate the intervention and referral services process to be utilized across district schools with a focus on scientifically-based interventions that can be implemented and monitored to assess student progress in order to determine the continued need for intervention or referral to the child study team. So within the activities, you know, the goal, the role of this group would be to examine the determination of interventions and their impact on student learning. The second activity is to monitor the district classification rate. I just want to touch upon this for a second. Within the audit, our district classification rate was found to be high compared to other similar districts. This is an area that we're starting to really delve into. We reached out to the state, and we were informed that the federal government changed the requirement, or changed the criteria for district classification rate. So now students placed in non-public school settings are included within that rate. So when you go on the state website, it's more general numbers, general ed and special ed. So this is something that I'm hoping that we can look into a little bit further in looking at some of the Essex County districts in terms of how many non-public schools are in the district, how many non-public students are there, and also, you know, how many of those non-public students have a service plan and would be eligible for special education services. So there's some more, you know, I guess, data diving to get a little bit more information regarding the district classification rate. And then the final activities are to research and identify effective instructional programs and interventions that can be implemented and monitored, with the culminating activity to establish a consistent process for monitoring the effectiveness of interventions prior to making a referral to the child study team. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rutske, I guess we'll take question comments from the board, then we'll open up to the public.
That's correct.
Okay.
Lauren, can we set up another microphone? You don't have to do it right now. We can just take the questions in the public, and then we can have the... Great, thank you.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Alper.
So throughout the audit, there were some mentions of, there was one in particular, the child study teams wanted more training on legal issues within special education, and there was a suggestion that the district special ed attorney attended department meeting. I know the action plan doesn't mention that specifically. There's professional development for building principals on special ed law in 414, but not for CSTs, though 415, right after it said to continue to reinforce legal updates with CST members. So I was just wanting to see if that, if 415 was going to meet that need for the CSTs.
Right. Yes, and I can speak to, again, I had referenced the October 9th PD for paraprofessionals. On October 9th, we provided a full-day PD with our child study team and related service providers with the district attorney, and that's something that we will continue to, you know, move forward in planning.
Okay. There were some mentions, obviously, of communications, and there was talk of a group email system for contacting special education student parents. 222 talks about multiple methods of communicating CPAC events to parents with a focus in added district. And I wanted to see if there was a plan to use that also for not just Who CPAC events, but also for district things in general, so that parents aren't, say, getting left out of committees when they form, but also communications from home schools to added district students about activities that might be happening at the school that they might be missing out on because they're not getting backpack notices and things like that.
Right. I think this is a really important topic in terms of ensuring that the added district parents are informed of school activities. That's an area that we have to continue to work on or work towards in establishing a method to get that information out there. We do have three added district case managers currently, and they do case manage students across grade levels in various added district placements. So we will look at a format as to how we can communicate school-based events for added district students in which that would be their home school.
Okay. And my other question for you was on the paperwork issues. Obviously, the action plan mentions corrections there in a number of places, but I wanted to see if we were also going to consider doing our own regular internal audits, you know, as we start making corrections to make sure that the new work that's getting done is being done, you know, 100% to the rule.
Right.
Yeah.
So to speak to an internal audit, we've established peer review teams within the child study team, so we will be utilizing the checklist that was provided by the auditors. So we'll have the child study team reviewing the IEPs, in addition to myself and the current supervisor, Mrs. Rabiro, who is the secondary supervisor, where we will do a random IEP review and communicate directly with case managers with feedback. So we have currently two internal mechanisms in place, and we can certainly look into more.
Okay, great.
Okay. Mr. Mordecai?
Sure. First of all, thank you so much for all your hard work, and thank you to the team as well. I know the audit was quite comprehensive and, you know, a shock to most of us. On Goal 5, Objective 1, number 1, where you say you're going to create a committee to evaluate the current INRS system, what will be the makeup of that committee?
The committee would encompass school counselors, depending upon the building and who heads the INRS committee. It could be a building principal, an assistant principal, as well as child study team members. And that committee would really be looking at what are the current practices across buildings in terms of the INRS process, how the paperwork's completed, what are interventions that are considered, and how they're monitored.
I'm jumping around a little. In Goal 1, where you mentioned the post-high school transition portion, you really didn't go into a lot of depth on that, and if you could just explain what will be in place for the students post-secondary?
I'm sorry, which area was that?
Goal 1, number 4, the pages aren't numbered. Goal 1, number 4, where you mentioned grade 12 to post-secondary, developing a comprehensive transition framework?
The transition framework is looking more at our in-district transitions that are occurring, looking at how we're transitioning students from pre-K to kindergarten, you know, grade 5 to grade 6, grade 6 to grade 7, and then 8 to 9, and really kind of looking at the, what are we providing to them in the district? Is going, you know, is scheduling a visit to the school at the end of the school year enough for the students, or should we be encompassing additional transition activities?
Okay. And then for the last piece, you have grade 12 to post-secondary. Any thing on that?
We can look into that area as well. That's a good point. We have our transition coordinator, Jody Goldstein, so she can certainly be involved in that conversation as well.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
Okay. Thanks again for a really comprehensive approach to addressing the needs. Couple of questions. One actually dovetails on Mr. Alper's question about the internal audit, and you noticed, you noted establishing peer-reviewed teams, the CST checklist, feedback loops through case managers, et cetera. Will you also be having any sort of regular QA review meetings? And I ask this because we went through this before. November 10th, it was one of my early meetings, November 10th, 2014, we had, I still have a stack like that that came from the state with over 100 audit violations, and we had an action plan then. Will there be regular... Will there be regular Q and A meetings to go through, you know, where we are in terms of the progress with this?
In terms of the Q and A meetings, are you, I just want to make sure I'm answering the question correctly. Are you referring to administration with child study team, or?
All the above. I mean, you have a list of interventions and action steps. I guess my concern is going from great plan to ensuring execution and quality assurance, because we had a great plan before to address 100 audit violations, and we have a startling report that we're addressing now. You know, is there going to be some sort of regular framework to look through these, just as they have a checklist? What is our checklist in terms of, okay, we're meeting this, we're meeting this, we're meeting this? Is it a weekly, bi-weekly, monthly? Are you going to have QA meetings to review the steps of each along the way to make sure there's actual execution?
Right. Well, I can speak to the administrative, from the administrative standpoint with myself and Ms. Ribero. We have weekly meetings, specifically with myself and Ms. Ribero, and we have encompassed, you know, a review of IEPs on a weekly basis and then reaching out to case managers with that feedback. So, we can certainly compile the information that we collect based on our review. With the peer reviews, with the child study team, we have to ensure that, you know, from a union standpoint, we can't just say, okay, you're going to review this staff member's IEP. So, we do have to ensure we're blocking the information, but the goal is to select some IEPs where, you know, myself and Ms. Ribero could be involved in that conversation. So, we're reviewing the IEPs with the teams, certainly with no identifying information as to who wrote the IEP, and we can have that conversation regarding what, you know, what are the common trends, themes and patterns that are emerging in there. So, it's certainly something that will be ongoing.
Okay. And you'll be checking on the actual use of the checklist size?
Correct.
As you look back at the results of the audit, was that information utilized to really begin a review and evaluation of staff and to identify, hey, these are key, some key learnings that came out of this in terms of strengths, weaknesses, and to develop an actual, more customized PD plan to address specific staff needs, as well as looking at accountability?
Right, right. Yes, I think in the different areas, there's PD that are specific to our general education teachers, PD that's specific to the child study team members. Is that?
No. I guess what I'm getting to, getting at is, after we came back with these extensive findings, and these findings were based on pulling like 111 cases to look at, were we able to go back and identify any, like, specific staff member needs, trends, et cetera, to say, hey, okay, well, this has come up again and again and again with this individual or this individual, they really have this need, they have this need? Have you really done a drill down from an evaluation standpoint?
Right. The difficult part is, so, the IEPs were reviewed at random, there were 111 files. I was not given the information in terms of the files that were reviewed, so it was hard for me to go back and say, okay, I can understand where this feedback came from, you know, were there patterns in the staff members that, you know, in which case the IEP was developed? So, it was difficult to drill down that closely, the information, because I'm not sure which files were reviewed.
Understood, understood. And last, I didn't, I may have missed it, because this is very comprehensive, extensive, and thank you, but was there any sort of case management software that we're exploring at all? Because I know that there's software programs out there where you can literally look from, you know, at, at what's being signed off, what's being done at each step along the way.
Right. We currently use IEP Direct. That has some functionality. I would have to look into some research, or research some programs to see about, you know, how to monitor signatures and other areas.
Yeah, because I, I'm not sure it does that, because it doesn't really allow you to see, if you were to look at an individual, where they are, what their needs are, what was signed off, what was checked in, and be able to share that information.
It's more the overarching, you know, development of the IEP, looking at dates of, you know, when the reeval is due, the annual, but not so much the backend of, of the clerical piece of making sure the document's signed and everything's there.
Right.
So, we can look into that, though.
Thirty-three percent, or something, yeah, that was disturbing. But, this is excellent. I, you know, totally, very optimistic, wish you the best, and glad that this is happening.
Thank you.
Very happy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. My two questions or comments are, I guess, directed to, first one directed to Mr. Rutske and Mr. Calvano. Throughout the report, it says a lot of PDs need, even in the action plan. So, are we okay, I don't know from a budget standpoint, for the closing year, and is something we have to address in the coming year as far, as far as that?
Yes, for both. We're good for now, and we already had a lot of money built in for the PD, for this and other things, and we have it built in for next year as well.
Okay. And can you give, about a few months ago, we talked about a policy on spec ed that was, at that time, there's, there were some errors in it. Can you give me an update on where we are with that policy, if it's been finalized, corrected?
It hasn't been finalized. It was finalized some months ago.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you for your, your time and your effort.
Thank you.
Just, Mr. Charles, on the policy, it wouldn't hurt us as the board, you know, since I'm, Mrs. Mordecai and I, Ms. Mordecai and I are new, new policy chairs, to maybe take a second look at it, because I know that there were some folks that still had concerns about the policy. So, it wouldn't hurt us to, to review, yeah, and it wouldn't hurt to review it again.
Okay, so, the committee, committee can take a look at it.
The committee can take a look at it, absolutely.
Yeah, we added on first and second reading, and that, as the request of the public.
I recall.
We added a third reading.
I'm still hearing questions about it.
Yeah, I am too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to ask the public if they have questions or comments that dealing just with the special education audit. If you come up to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. Mr. Calvano will work the clock, three minutes to speak. This is just on the special education audit action plan. Please come up.
Alex Eron, 546 Valley Road. I have several questions in that regards. Any primary, more information about the transition plan? I know you kind of reply a little to Sandra, but why didn't you give him more space? According to the audit, there are several areas that are really wrong in the transition, starting from just the statement, just the signature, not having no vocational piece, not having, no transition plan in general. So, what is the status of that, and how are you going to be proceeding the PD for the people that are in charge of it? Also, there is the part of the reading, there is several indicates a lot of the issues that they're presenting in the area of reading and the language and art, primarily with the middle school. I know you mentioned a little piece of the little school. I want more information in that regards. When they're talking about the PLAF, okay, and we're talking about how you're going to be training the staff in regards of how they're going to be using the IEP Direct. The IEP Direct, in the main thing, in the majority of the problems in 111 files, was the lack of characteristic placement, information, distribution, what was the classification of the, of the, of the child that is in case, the run of the classification, they have ADHD, and they have something else, let's just give them pretty much a multiple disable, which we know is wrong. There are several of those things that I want to get more information. And the other part is more in regards of behavior interven, sorry, interventions, as well as the area of the BA. I know that we only have two BCBAs in the district. They're taking care of not only of general education, but also of special education, what the primary role should be for special education. So, I wanted to get information, do we planning to hire someone else? Because clearly, it's very difficult when a, a BCBAs pretty much have to put at least 48 hours, and that's a short period of time to do a FBA. So, that would be one of the other thing. And also, the, I didn't hear nothing about the kids with anxiety, or some mental issues, or stress, or going through some of the mental health challenge in general. There was no information in that regards. And the last piece, it will be in regards of the policy. Thank you for, I think it was Mark who brought it up, as well as Ronnie, in regards of the policy. If the policy of special education is being done a month ago, it said there is still no being presented, neither being announced, there is in the website, I hope it's in the website. That will be the other question. Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Beazer, 82 Lawrence Avenue. Thank you. That was a very informative presentation, very detailed, and I didn't manage to get a copy, but I appreciate you giving the, the hard copies. My first question has to do with something that I noticed in the report. In the report that was posted by the past organization, there was a paragraph that was not in the report posted by the Board of Ed. And that paragraph references mutually agreed upon plans and actions that must take place to attain compliance with NGAC. So, my question is, are there other plans and actions that were previously agreed on that are not contained in the plan that you presented today? I noticed the, the issues with reading, particularly at the middle school level. A couple of years ago, the district first reduced the time, there was a separate reading class in sixth grade. First, the time was reduced, which I understand took away from the curriculum that was supposed to be presented during that time, and then the class was eliminated. And I wonder if this finding would cause a revisiting of that decision, that maybe the reading class is beneficial and necessary to all students. I would echo what Alec said about anxiety and social emotional needs was mentioned several times through this report as something that supports our lacking, and the BCBAs having only two for a district this size. I know that I waited two years before we got an analysis for my child. It sounds like there is a tremendous amount of professional development needed, and I'm glad to hear that there's a plan in motion to get that done. I'm wondering how that can take place without overly impacting the students who those professionals would normally be with during that time. And finally, I guess, throughout, I noticed lots of comments about communication problems, and specifically, in many instances, communication with administration. The CPAC committee members found it a difficulty to communicate concerns to administration. Teachers felt important decisions were being made without their input, and I'm wondering what is going to be put in place to improve that communication as it goes all the way up the chain and improve accountability from the top. And one last thing, I see that teachers noted one concern they had was class size, and that they thought reduction in class size would alleviate some of these problems, and is that something that can be considered? Thank you.
Anyone further?
Orin Levin, 5 Coral Circle. Two questions on Goal One, Objective Three. I see Activity Three, Developing the Framework for the Delivery of Orton Gillingham. Do you have any early feedback in, on the pilot program that's going on right now? And then, secondly, Activity Seven, again, the, the researching, reading-based programs at the middle school level. As the parent of a child who has issues with reading and language processing, I think waiting till the middle school is, is far too late. We've dealt with reading pretty much throughout elementary school, and it wasn't until this year at Edison that we finally got an IEP in place for, so, I'd like to know what you, what the, what the plan is to identify the students earlier. Thank you.
Anyone further? Okay, we'll close that portion. The Director Corey?
One more.
Okay, please come.
Amber Newsom, 18 Arvin Road. Preston, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. This is completely excellent. My, my favorite part is the procedure manual. I guess, touching on your checklist that you're going to be doing, like, I love accountability. So, when you guys are going through your internal audit and checklist, will you be touching point with the public, with the parents, like, during the Board of Ed meetings, maybe semi-annually, because you said things are in progress, 2019, 2020, to just kind of talk to us where you are in your action steps and what you guys have done, to kind of communicate with us outwardly where you are in the process? That's just my question. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone further? Okay, we'll close that section now. Okay, please.
Ms. Coogarty, you and I will kind of bounce off of each other here. Ms. Newsom, yeah, there will be clear, where's Ms. Newsom? There'll be clear updates with the board, progress, things you'll see on the website, et cetera, about progress being made as far as the action steps, the checklist, internal checklist, things of that nature. That is, the internal checklist is more for us for the accountability piece, but as far as the action steps, yes, there will definitely be updates on that. Mr. Levine, the, the Orton Gillingham, where's Ms. Levine at? Let's see, Mr. Levine, it's, it's not a pilot, it's, it's a program that's in place. It's a two-year program through FDU that we've identified special education teachers that when they finished last year, they have a skill set that they obviously are able to take back and work with students who have challenges with reading. And, and I don't mean a simple challenges, I mean really in-depth challenges to help students make the progress they need to make as far as special needs students. They're now in the middle of their second year, which it's a two-year program. There'll be a new cohort that is preparing for September of next year, but these individuals, we just recently met with them to talk about what next year could look like. And so, there's conversations with a lot of different people that need to happen, so everybody understands what Orton Gillingham can do to help a student and who really would receive Orton Gillingham across the district. So, there's a lot of work in our preparation for September of next year and what the role of these individuals who come out of this two-year program, the skill set that they have, how they can benefit the students across the district. So, that is something that we're planning for, but the, it is a two-year program, there's a lot of things that need to be accomplished within those two years. So, this year, there are some of those individuals who are being utilized with that skill set, but they're not completely done yet because they have a whole nother year left. So, basically, they're a year and a half into it. As far as a reading problem in middle school, agreed, we have to identify kids much earlier. One of the things we put in place to help us do that is the Foundations Program. It's now in its second year. It's a primary program of K1 and 2. So, unfortunately, our current third grade students only had it for one year in their second grade. Our current second grader are now in their second year, so they had it for first and second. But our current first graders, when they're done next year, they will have the three years in a row. And it really has been well received because it provides a tool to help students, excuse me, to help educators determine if students are lacking skills that they need. And the sooner that we catch that deficit, the better chance we have of helping that student. And you're right, by the time they hit third grade and move through that intermediate three through five, we want to make sure that we've identified it, put it in place, and hopefully have, identify what we can do so when they leave elementary school, they're back on track for their reading. That's not realistic to think that every single student is, that's going to happen to, but that's what the goal is, and then having things in place beyond the fifth grade as well. And that's where Ms. Coogarty is talking about enhancing that, the INRS piece and the, in the structure for helping the kids in the, the language arts class.
If I could just add, several years ago, my son took the Orton Gillingham reading program, and it's an excellent program. When Fairleigh Dickinson first introduced it, they had a pilot program for master's degree educators to come in and learn that program, and my kid was one of the guinea pigs. I actually went on a waiting list for him to, to get into that program, and he's, he's reading on grade level, and my son was severely dyslexic, and it really helped him.
Yeah, it's a phenomenal program, no question about it. Ms. Beazer, as far as communication, we agree, absolutely a priority, we're working, I know that. Ms. Coogarty has really done a fine job working with CPAC and others to make sure that we're moving in a positive step towards improving communication. The PD and how it's not going to impact students when we have to provide all that PD, it's strategically done, there's 90-minute meetings, there's after-school meetings, there's staff meetings that happen during the day with child study team, et cetera. So, working with the teachers and looking at all the PD, it's not just the special ed PD, but all the PD across, and having a calendar that identifies the needs of PD, and then figuring out how we can provide it without impacting the students. BCBAs? BCBA's, that was brought up a couple of times, we agree, it's something we're looking at for this year, for this coming budget, to see if we can do something about increasing the BCBA's. And I know that there's been a piece that Ms. Gogarty's put in place, if you want to talk about that.
Sure. We recognize that we only have the two district BCBA's that are, you know, responsible for all twelve schools within the district. So, one of the things I did was looking at, you know, what the requests for the BCBA's were. So, were there prior interventions that were put into place? Was it something that we could have the BCBA's go work with, you know, the teacher in terms of strategies? So, we have a set protocol that's followed by the buildings, and that seems to have really helped to have them in the classes where they need to be and supporting the students and, you know, really maximizing their time in the district.
As far as the reading course that used to be in the middle school, the problem when you have something in isolation, it's not effective. So, not all students received it, and it was done without falling a curriculum that aligned with the Language Arts Program. So, it was this little island sitting out there, and it was not effective in what was happening. What we want to do is have that consistency for all students through a really fine-developed curriculum and teachers that have that quality PD that know how to teach that reading and writing, and that's in place. And when the foundation at the elementary level is solid, then the middle school level will be solid, and it carries itself right up through the high school. As far as the anxiety, social, emotional needs, again, that's something we agree with, that's something we have to look at. You know, do we have the individuals in place that can help students, whether they're currently in the district or moving into the district? Those are things that we're currently looking at. And you mentioned something about the report. The report, the complete report, has been on the website for a very long time. Now, when the report was provided, the executive summary was provided through the PowerPoint from the group. The board had a couple of things that needed to be adjusted to that, and so that report got changed. So, when the group was finished with the report, that was sent back to us, we reviewed, make sure the changes were done, and then it was up there. I'm not aware of anything that was different. There could be something, that's something we can certainly talk about. But the report, the PowerPoint, and the executive summary have been on the website for several weeks.
Mr. Rutske, can I add one thing?
Please, yeah.
Just going back to the question about the PD and anxiety and emotional difficulties, under Goal One, Objective Three, there is an activity, it's included as one of the PD components for teachers. So, it is touched upon within here, so I just wanted to share that information.
On the social, emotional, and anxiety issues, are we also, because a lot of times they're coming up in, being counted by Gen Ed teachers first, are we doing anything from a PD standpoint to also address Gen Ed teachers early identifying these? Because I've already seen head personally with my son, as well as where cases with other kids, where the Gen Ed teacher didn't notice that, gee, this, you know, A kid who was doing all these things, all of a sudden dropped off, and there was something wrong. Oh, no, it was just harder work, right? No. And they didn't notice that a change in attitude, change in behavior, change in performance indicated that there was something that should be looked at and investigated further, and that then caused a delay in actually assessing what was needed.
That's a very valid point, and that PD will include general education teachers.
Okay. Okay, so, we talked about the BCBA, we talked about the mental health challenges. Intervention, it's important that we really understand what intervention looks like and how it can be most effective. And so, when everybody understands that instructionally-based interventions with the assessments that go with it, and then the feedback of whether it worked or not, or how it worked or it didn't work, then you come back to the IRAS team and you have that conversation over a two, three, four-week period, and then you try some different ones. Each intervention has to be specific to the student. Now, there are interventions that can be used with similar students, but when we're talking about an IRAS, this is a really key component to helping students and helping the teachers provide what they need to help the student at the younger age. So, again, it goes back to the foundation about working with those that are overseeing the intervention process, which is called Intervention Referral Services, and making sure that we have some consistency across the district. As far as the PLEPS and IEP Direct, it is a very fine program. We have to make sure that everybody understands the components of it. Professional development will be provided, again, thoroughly on the IEP Direct to make sure that the use of it takes advantage of how good the program really is. And Ms. Gogarty, if you want to go a little farther into the transition plan?
Sure.
Please.
So, Mr. Ron, I know you referenced the transition plan. I think there's twofold components within the transition. I think when you referenced how it's written in the IEP, I think that falls under the IEP compliance domain and the professional development in looking at the critical components of the IEP. And then, we have the actual transitional activities that are in place that are also an area of focus as well.
Mr. Charles.
We're going to move on to the STEM camp.
Okay, so, if I can ask the board to just come back out to the audience, we'll let Mr. Del Gershio get set up, we'll do the tech camp program.
Good evening. I'm very excited to talk about Engineering Explorations with you tonight in a little bit different role than I'm used to. A few years ago, I wanted to start a STEM camp that kind of challenged students, delivered rigorous STEM content, but also was very fun and exciting, given that it would be a camp delivered during the summer. I came up with Engineering Explorations. Engineering Explorations is a STEM camp for tomorrow's engineers. It's offered to students ages eight to fifteen, and will be delivered summer 2018, July ninth to July twenty-seventh. I do want to go to the website because there's a wealth of information on the website, and all these pictures that you see, of course, are some of our former campers. So, just those two videos on the bottom that you see, the one on the left is actually a student doing a drone flight. That's the actual camera that's attached to the drone. The student on the right is doing our simulated pilot training. So, after the first year, we had, we did a half-day camp. I polled all the parents, polled all the students, and we got a lot of positive feedback. They said, do full day, do full day. So, we switched to a full-day camp. So, the full-day camp we did last year, we'll plan on doing it this year as well. These are just some of the parent testimonials. My daughter loved this camp, she was excited to go every day, she enjoyed the instructors, Mr. Dell, and she learned something. What more can you ask for from a camp? My son loved going to camp every day and loved that he was both having fun and learning about how things work. From one of our campers, Engineering Explorations was a great camp because it's easy to make friends. Even if you know a lot about engineering, you'll still learn something and have a great So, students participating in Engineering Explorations Day Camp will be exposed to various disciplines of engineering in a fun and exciting environment. They'll be taught STEM principles within innovative hands-on projects. Students will document their learning in an engineering portfolio filled with activities and rigorous STEM content that they'll complete throughout the camp. They also get to keep all projects they fabricate. These include a marble run, water-powered rockets, and solar-powered fan in Foundations of STEM course, solar-powered cars, model skyscrapers and roller coasters in the Engineering Design course. Students get to design their own T-shirt and sticker designs in the 3D Prototyping and Graphic Design course. In addition, they fabricate alarm circuits, robotic circuits, and learn Arduino programming in the Robotics Fabrication and Programming course. Students will get to enjoy the summer weather each day during their technology recess where they get to fly quadcopter drones, drive RC cars, play vintage video games, and examine the latest technologies such as virtual reality. We strive to not only build your child's academic skills, but their leadership skills as well through cooperative learning in a supportive environment. So, our courses, as I mentioned, we have, we're going to be offering four courses. The first course is going to be called Foundations of STEM. That's going to be recommended ages eight to ten. Each week is kind of like its own siloed curriculum, so it gives the parents a lot of flexibility. We had a lot of problems the first year with, well, you know, I want to sign up just one week out of the three, or two weeks out of the three, or week one and week three, just because people are going on vacation a lot in the summer. So, we redesigned some of our curriculum where each week culminates in at least two to three take-home projects. So, a parent can sign up for week one and week three, and the student will not learn any kind of, lose any kind of content, because each week it's its own kind of separate curriculum within the overall course. So, we have Engineering Design, recommended ages nine to fourteen. You could see I kind of highlighted each week's major hands-on project. 3D Prototyping and Graphic Design, ages ten to fifteen. And Robotics Fabrication and Programming, the students must be at least thirteen years old, they'll be working with soldering iron, it's just a safety issue there. So, the daily schedule will be nine to nine-thirty, students check in, and objectives, activities for the day are presented, content reviewed from the previous session. Nine-thirty to eleven-thirty, new content presentation, student practice through cooperative learning. And then, the student's most desirable part is eleven-thirty to one, lunch, students have to bring their own lunch into technology recess where students can play with remote control cars, remote control helicopters, drones, vintage video games, RC tanks, and virtual reality devices. There's a whole bunch of other ones, those are just the most popular ones. One to two-fifteen, project completion where students work on the application of content through hands-on project-based learning. And two-fifteen to two-thirty, session review, cleanup, and parent pickup. So, what are the benefits to West Orange? West Orange residents will receive a forty-five percent discount off of regular student tuition. Engineering Explorations will start a $2,000 scholarship fund after summer 2018 for any West Orange High School senior that's accepted into a college engineering program. Engineering Explorations will employ West Orange teachers to be lead teachers within the courses. Engineering Explorations will employ recent West Orange High School graduates to become camp counselors and teacher's aides. Engineering Explorations has already assumed all startup costs over the past two years and will continue to purchase all required supplies. And Engineering Explorations has already written and copyrighted curriculum used for camp courses. Questions? Okay.
Yeah, if I can just add one piece. This is a really unique opportunity for us, and we know that this is an important part. We've put the STEM courses into the sixth grade, seventh grade, kind of moving forward here, and we want to continue to push down to the elementary school. But having this opportunity for parents and basically getting half-price off, the board's only cost to this entire summer camp for the three weeks would be four classrooms. We would need to waive the cost for the four tech ed classrooms. Now, let me remind you as well, those rooms are not used in the summertime by any other group, so it wouldn't be like we're taking money out of the budget because somebody else is using them. They sit open all summer long. Okay?
Ms. Mordecai, it's time.
Thank you very much for bringing this opportunity to West Orange. This was a really great presentation. I wish you all the best luck on this. And I think this is going to become a feeder program for STEM classes at the high school, so I'm looking forward to that. I know many of our students at the high school take engineering classes and want to go on to being an engineer, so this is a great way to introduce engineering to the lower grades. Thank you.
Mr. Alpert?
Do we anticipate there being any conflicts with the existing summer enrichments with this?
No, we've looked into that, there'll be no conflict at all.
Okay, great. Any sense of how many West Orange teachers and how many West Orange graduates you would expect to hire?
I would say probably at least three West Orange teachers, definitely four West Orange graduates. The past couple of years, I've had two West Orange teachers and one West Orange graduate work for me last summer, actually.
Okay. I'm hoping we have a problem that we need more, because I actually think we will. I think that this is going to be bigger than in previous years with Del Gershio, at least I hope so. Great.
It worked out last year, the one student that had worked for me, Darian Cooper, West Orange graduate, I don't think he really thought about teaching, but he said, you know, I really like kind of getting involved and jumping in and helping the students, so it's also some experience with teaching the youngsters as well.
Great.
Okay, Mr. Ross?
Well, you know, I'm a big fan already, and this is absolutely wonderful. And actually, my son is in one of your engineering courses at the high school now, and did one last year, so, love, love, love all the stuff you're doing. Have you considered, in order to continue to grow the popularity of the program, in addition to promoting it, well, first of all, to promote the program, I don't know if you considered a dog and pony show for the PTAs, and also considered to compete, potentially compete on par with some of the other programs out there, looking at some of the Child Resource Guides and stuff that are distributed at the Y and other places as potential areas for you to promote the program? What are you considering to do?
Definitely, the more promotion, the better. I'm actually going to be at the Livingston Mall this Sunday from twelve to three for the New Jersey Camp Fairs. So, I'll have a booth set up with very similar information. I got big signs and everything, but promotion's very, that's one thing I learned, is promotion is very, very big to get the people on board.
What I suggest, one thing I suggest is, I'm a Girl Scout and Boy Scout leader, they have about a hundred and fifty badges related to science stuff, just for Boy Scouts alone. I forget how many for Girl Scouts on their various journeys. And engineering is key to both. We have a number of troops and packs for Boy Scouts, as well as troops for Girl Scouts in West Orange. Definitely want to get to them because they're already primed for this. They can actually get badges for this in addition to enjoying your great program. So, they're a prime group, and I do suggest getting in to actually show this to PTAs. Parents will devour this. There are lesser programs that they're sending their kids to right now, and this is amazing. On a different track, I also wonder, you know, right now, in Madison schools, I just found out from a parent when I went to the recent Girl Scout campery at the Frozen Lake there, that in Madison schools, they're actually, they actually have a STEM curriculum for, starting in third grade for kids, that is not, it's on a regular basis. It's several times throughout the week, and it's integrated into their science and math, including starting some robotics as early as third grade. Given the curricula that you already have and the tremendous success that you've already experienced in bringing and expanding engineering for West Orange, and I love the camp, I think the camp is awesome, but what are we doing to take this and to, as you put it, Mr. Rutske, push it down to elementary school? Because it's happening at some of the other school districts, and we have the knowledge, we have the know-how, we have the curricula, but I know that there's also a training component in terms of integrating it and with existing science and math. What are we doing with that?
That's a whole nother, okay. So, that's, so we actually, Stephanie Serona, the science supervisor and I actually just met, we got together a STEAM committee with all the teachers, who, pretty much each teacher from each school that's very, very good in STEM is representing each school. We had a committee meeting, I want to say, two weeks ago to address just that issue, and the ideas that were coming from that committee, everybody was very excited, like I didn't expect to have that much excitement and that many ideas. So, there's lots of good ideas. What our goal is, is to articulate amongst all the schools, hey, this one school, Kelly School, is doing this project, let's do it at all the schools. So, step one was just kind of articulate and identify projects that each individual school is doing, because right now, it's a little bit siloed, so we want to get it all uniform across all the schools, so it leads up to our current sixth grade class, seventh grade class, eighth grade in the high school. So, we are definitely working towards that direction, and we're sharing a lot of great ideas, and I think the next step is PD. All right, well, if you're doing this particular project at Kelly, let's share it with the rest of the group so it can be done across all the schools. So, that's something that's definitely going to work, and we're working towards.
That's awesome. Thank you for all the great work you do, and, because this is also great for our brand as a school system, and we were talking earlier- as a school system, and we were talking earlier, and, and before the meeting about how we really need to promote what we're doing, because parents, a lot of the parents of younger kids don't know. And keep up the great work. Thank you so much.
Mr. Gershio, I just have a quick comment. Is there a max amount of students that?
I try to limit each class to about 12 students.
Okay. And do you, the age group is eight to 15. Do you feel that the 16 and 17-year-olds not interested in, or is it something that you feel?
To be honest with you, once they get that age, they're at the high school level, so we have, we have the courses here to kind of address what they need. So there's, there's tons of different courses, so I feel like if they're really into it, then they should be taking some of our courses.
That's all I have.
To Mr. Charles's point, something you may also want to explore for the older kids who are doing that, and my son was able to take advantage of part of it at FDU. Some of the colleges, like FDU, have both engineering, have engineering tracks, computer science tracks, et cetera, to introduce the kids to it, they're like weekend programs, and they may even offer, in some cases, they do offer in some cases, scholarship money should they enter that university. So I'll, I'll have Donna reach out to you about that, but there's definitely opportunities for some synergies there with some other stuff out there. But thank you.
Mr. Rutske, will take questions or comments from the public now?
Yes, please.
Okay, if anyone has any questions or, or comments about the engineering explorations, please come up to the microphone. That's okay. Please, please state your name, and I'll just, again, for the record, and Mr. Calabano will work the clock.
Orin Levin, five Coral Circle. I know you mentioned hiring recent graduates to help with the program. With the, with the program itself going through age 15, have you also looked at having upperclassmen at the high school volunteer at the program?
Yeah, I would definitely be open to that, absolutely.
See you now, we'll close that portion of the meeting. Mr. Del Gershio, thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Gershio, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Rutske, next on the agenda?
So I just want to see how you feel about the camp itself, because if we were able to let Mr. Del Gershio know that all of you are in favor of it, we could add it to the agenda, then he could say, when he's publicizing over at Livingston Mall, that it's going to be held at West Orange High School. Right now, the camp is still at, not Madison, but Mr. Del Gershio, where is it currently? At Madison. So if you're comfortable, we'll have Mr. Calabano add this to the agenda for your approval, and then we can move forward, and he can go ahead and we can start publicizing.
I make a motion that we, that this program be added to the agenda for board approval.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, next on the Chief Lieutenant's Report is the draft 2018-19 calendar, so I just want to go through, does everybody have a copy of it, or do you need another copy? I have one here if you need it. Yep, I do. Okay, so we start in September, Labor Day is the 3rd of September, we would have the first staff day on Tuesday, the 4th, first student day on the 5th, which is Wednesday. We have Rosh Hashanah the following Monday, Tuesday, the 10th, 11th. October, we would have our second PD day for our staff on Columbus Day. November, the 8th and 9th is NJEA convention, half-day on the 21st. 22nd and 23rd is Thanksgiving recess. December, half-day on Friday, the 21st. Off the 24th through the 1st, returning to school on January 2nd. On the 16th of January, we would have our 90-minute PD for staff, that would be 90-minute delayed opening with Martin Luther King Jr., Celebration Day on the 21st. February, President's Day on the 18th. Our second 90-minute delayed opening for, for PD for staff, that would be March 13th. Spring break would be the week of 15th through 19th. I just want to stop there for a minute and, and explain Passover is the following week. Obviously, it starts the weekend sundown and moves through, and we always try to align Good Friday and then the next week. Unfortunately, because of the last day of school being on Thursday, we would have to take graduation to four days later, which is the Monday, which I do not recommend we do, so we would need to have our vacation the week of the 15th instead of starting on the 19th, which is Good Friday, and going through the following week. May, we have Memorial Day on the 27th, and then our last day for students would be the 19th, which is a half-day, and then graduation would be the following day on Thursday, the 20th. Questions?
None.
Ms. Mordecai?
None.
Mr. Robertson?
Should we explore having schools close on Election Day again? A couple of things that I saw at the polls, one, I still am concerned about, one, safety issues, and two, for the folks who are actually using the polls, and I saw this a lot at Gregory, not having it on that, in the cafeteria on the lower level, it was actually very challenging, made worse by the rain, but very challenging for elderly and, and those who had physical challenges. So it was challenging for the community, and also worried it's still disruptive in relation to the schools. Any thoughts on that?
Well, we, we discussed that, and I'm a huge fan of not having school for voting. The problem is, that's very challenging for parents when you have the 8th and the 9th off for NJEA convention. It's just hard, and then two weeks later, you have the Thanksgiving. But I, I would absolutely close school on Election Day just for the safety of the students and the staff, but I know we talked about this the last couple of years, and that was a major concern that we had.
Understood. You're right, you're right.
Anything further, Mr. Robertson?
No, sir.
I have nothing as well.
Nothing else? Okay, so this will be on the agenda next on the February 12th for approval, then.
Okay.
Two board members asked me to do some research on a fee for our parking lots, and so I did some checking around the county, and there's very few districts that charge for people parking in their parking lots. One that we were able to find was Montclair, and Montclair has a three-tiered system. Obviously, if it's for our own staff, let's say that teachers are going to a Yankee game, and they wanted to park at Central Office of the High School, obviously, there's no charge. Anybody in the district that would put in and, and do the proper paperwork, you know, would be fine using the parking lots. The next group, the, the way they set it up is groups that are in town. If it's affiliation with the town somehow, they have two different pricing ranges. They have from Monday to Friday, it's $49 per day, $200 per week. Now, that's only for up to five hours per day. So it's 49 per day, $200 per week, but up to five hours for that day. And then on the weekends, it's $116 per day, and again, that's a five-hour window. Paperwork would have to be submitted, the insurance would have to be submitted, et cetera. And then tier three would be anybody who's outside of the community. They would be paying additional money for Monday through Friday, they'd be paying $99 per day, or $400 per week, and again, that's a five-hour window. Or on Saturdays and Sundays, $228 per day. So there's not a lot of districts that do charge for the school facilities, excuse me, for the parking lots, but Montclair is one. And again, they have it broken down by, you know, the, the district staff, and then those that live in the community or, or have a, a business in the community, and then lastly, those that would live outside of the community. So we, we certainly could put something together ourselves if you wanted to move in that direction, but there's not a lot of help out there right now as far as parking lot fees.
So I guess, let's talk about it as, as a board and see what we feel before moving forward, so I, I'm not interested in, in charging the fees, so I don't know how everybody else feels.
I'm not interested, and frankly, some of the rates you're reading, it's cheaper to park in New York. Mr. Alpert, I don't know.
Do we get a lot of requests right now for things like this?
We, we had a request that took place up at Liberty, and I think that was what kind of brought this up, is that, that a, a couple of board members were not happy that they were able to use the facility with just the insurance, that they were provided the use of it on the weekend. We didn't have any facility usage during that weekend, but that's what kind of prompted this whole discussion.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, and I assume the 40, the fees would be for the organization as one fee, not a per car thing, right?
Correct. Yeah, yes. One parking lot fee. No, no, one parking lot fee.
Even that's pretty expensive.
It seems like there might be more headaches managing.
Listen, I don't, I don't recommend it, but again, it was asked to research it to see what is out there. I don't recommend, we have the fee, but this is all we could identify was Montclair.
It seems like a hassle, and then we might have conflicts with PTA things like car washing.
Yeah, that could be nuts.
Then who takes priority in, or MTL stuff.
Yeah.
I'm not interested in charging a fee either, but if, if I was, I probably need it for more than five hours. I mean, if you, if you went on a trip, yeah, you'd want to leave your car.
Be 12 hours or something like that.
You'd be in the city for six to eight hours.
All right, so now.
Minimum.
What I'm hearing is we're all unanimously, you know, behind the
We don't want the headache.
Charging no fees.
Okay, so, so
It's a lot more work than it's worth.
What's the board's stance on members requesting the use of our parking lots that are not in West Orange? Would you like to allow them to use it, or not?
What do you mean, members?
Any kind of organization that may not be in West Orange, they may be on the border of West Orange. For instance, Liberty, obviously, is very close to, you know, Livingston, and, and they're very close to saying, boy, this would be great, it's a large parking lot. The question for the board is, do you want to grant them permission to use our parking lot facility, or not?
Well, I would, I would charge them. West Orange residents, I probably wouldn't, but anyone outside, I, I would.
First of all, is it, is it broken? Do we need to fix it? I mean, what, what circumstances have arisen to prompt it? Has this been an issue? Have people been using our parking lots in an unauthorized way or in a manner that disrupts other uses of the property that we've already booked and scheduled?
No to all of those. Again, it was an organization that utilized it, and two board members in particular said, you know, are they being charged, and yes, no, and the, et cetera. And the answer is no, they were not, but their insurance is covering us as a board and as a district. So the question is, when people request the use of them, is the board okay with outside of West Orange organizations parking there as long as they have the insurance?
If they're, given a formal request, can't we just take it on a case-by-case situation based, I mean, just as we do with facilities?
I was going to say, is that something?
Even though we have a policy in place, and we have forms in place.
Shouldn't that be added on the permit requests?
Yeah, I mean, they still have to apply for permits.
Well, again, if, if we're not, if, if we're not charging anybody, and they're just at, just for instance, if somebody, PTA wants to use something, and they come and, yes, they, they get that granted to them. That's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about an outside group, so if an outside group wants to use the high school auditorium, they're paying for it.
Yes.
Okay, so you, you've said that you don't want to charge anybody for the parking lots, so my question is, are you okay? So it's just West Orange residents then, is that's what you're saying?
Yeah, they're fine. I, I would charge outside folks. I wouldn't charge West Orange residents.
If they're, are they using the parking lots in conjunction with using the facilities?
No.
Okay. If it's just somebody wants to park in our lots without using the facilities?
I think, I think what, what Mr. Rutske is talking about is there, an outs, a church outside of town used Liberty Park Lot
Correct.
At one time, and
Without permission?
And they busted
No, no, they had permission.
They had permission?
They had permission, and they had the, the correct insurance for it as well.
Okay.
But that's what stirred the conversation about, let's, let's look into see if you want to have parking fees, and so we did, but again, there's nobody really out there that's doing it besides Montclair. So if you're going to charge outside people, then we should come up with a fee, or we're either just going to let everybody do as long as they have insurance, or nobody from outside of West Orange. That's what I'm asking the board.
Can't we just think about this and come back to you at the February 12th meeting?
Absolutely.
Think about what appropriate fee and all that would be.
Absolutely.
And maybe some sense of what the numbers are, how much, how many of these there are a year.
Yeah.
Because if it's, if it's two
It's like a dozen buses or whatever.
Right. No, it's, it's, there's few.
Yeah.
There's few.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, any questions on the memorandum of agreement? Now, this is, again, this is between the education and law enforcement officials. There are no changes since 2015 with the memorandum of agreement, so I just wanted to ask before, it's on the agenda for approval, want to make sure there's no questions from the board members.
I don't have a question, but I just, I just want a quick comment, as being the law enforcement person on the, on the board. This is a comprehensive policy that is, talks about relationship between the law enforcement community and, and the school, and the school district. It covers everything from the roles of the prosecutor down to searches, the CDS, interview procedures. A lot of this stuff is actually coming from the Attorney General's
Yep.
Website and his directive, so this is pretty much standard stuff throughout the state of New Jersey.
Again, every district in New Jersey is required to pass the memorandum of agreement, so you're right. And, and we, we have a wonderful relationship with the Police Department in West Orange. They really help us on a daily basis in, in, in different ways, so it, it, the memorandum of agreement, again, hasn't changed in three years, simply because the Attorney General has not pushed that down for any change.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, let me give you the HIB.
Do we need, we don't need to vote to approve that one? Later on, okay.
Yeah, it's on the agenda for approval.
Any comments or questions from the board?
No, thank you.
I have none.
Okay, and lastly, just a couple of updates, extracurricular, just a reminder, this Wednesday for our parents, this Wednesday is a 90-minute delayed opening. Our high school will start at 9 o'clock. For the busing, it's 90 minutes later than you currently get picked up, so you can gauge your child going out for the bus 90 minutes later than they normally do. High school is 9:00 AM, middle school, including at 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, is 9:40, and elementary is 10:15. On February 9th, we're celebrating Black History Month in the Tarnoff Cafeteria, it starts at 6:00 PM. And then one really well-attended and well-received concert is the Music Faculty. That's the current faculty or former members of the faculty. That's Tuesday, February 6th at Liberty Middle School. That is always a very nice evening. As far as an athletic, quick athletic update, our boys and girls swimming, the girls are seven and one. They place third in the Essex County Meet. The boys are four and four, they place seven. Our wrestling is nine and two, our bowling is five and seven. Girls indoor track, they place third in the SCC Championships. Our boys also place third for indoor track. The girls' basketball is seven and four, had a very large win over, very big win, very key win over East Orange last week, and the boys' basketball right now are, they're eight and six, six and one in the division. So, and lastly, our hockey program is six, 10, and two, and while we always strive to have a winning record, I can tell you that this is a, a really nice improvement for our hockey program. There's a lot of work that's been taking place by the coaches, the parents, and obviously the kids, pushing down and getting more interest down below, so I really credit all the coaches and all the athletes, all those parents that are involved, but really, a shout-out to our hockey program and the progress they've made over the last couple of years. That's all I have, Mr. Charles.
Okay, next on the Okay, next on the agenda are questions from the public on agenda items. If you have any questions or comments specifically on agenda items, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Mr. Calavano will work the clock. Please keep in mind, these are just agenda items.
Hi, Rachel Gordon, Meeker Street. I had a question about the calendar. I'm curious as to why, since we haven't even had the first delayed opening official thing, I realize you have to organize the calendar and everything, but I'm wondering why, I think I asked this at last year's one, why it has to be a delayed opening for professional development instead of early dismissal? Because it's very hard for working parents with early dismissal. Children who are in elementary school and are in aftercare can get aftercare, but in delayed opening, there is no beforecare. So, it's a concern that I've heard from many parents who are scrambling this week to try and figure that out. So, I'm just wondering what the rationale is and if there's, if we couldn't instead do early dismissal.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone further?
Ms. Gordon, we have had many more problems with early dismissals than we have with delayed openings. We recognize the challenge that brings. We are working towards trying to help with the beforecare. We've strategized with a lot of different individuals to see what we can do and unfortunately, we can't say to certain groups, okay, because you do beforecare, you can continue to do it, because we know there's a lot of working parents. But what we have found is early dismissal is much more difficult. We've had many more complaints when we have to do an early dismissal because of the issue of, you know, parents being at work, needing to come pick up, and so on and so forth. So, we have found that parents are able to justify and maneuver their mornings a little easier and then get to work later and then be able to stay for the rest of the day versus leave, you know, at an early day in the afternoon to come and get their kids.
Next item on agenda. I need a motion to move Section A personnel.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Halper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes.
President Charles, if I may?
Yes, please.
I'd just like to make a comment on personnel.
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Like to congratulate Marie Corvelli on retirement after 27 years.
Wow.
And Mary Jean Guskowski, retirement after 15 years. We thank them for their service and wish them well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to, any motion to move Section B, Curriculum and Instruction?
So moved.
Including the summer STEM program?
That's correct.
Including summer STEM, yes.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mr. Halper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes.
Next, I need a motion for Section C of Finance.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mr. Halper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
I abstain from everything besides the reimbursement check from the convention. I abstain from that. Next, I need a motion on the miscellaneous D for the approval of the memorandum of agreement between the education and law enforcement officials for the 2017-18 school year.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano?
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Halper. Mr. Halper?
Yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes.
I made a motion, I need a motion for reports on their Section E.
I'll make that motion.
Are you second?
Second.
Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Mr. Halper?
Yes, though I should abstain from any HIB cases from before I was on the board. I think some of these may be. Am I ahead of myself?
This is from the last meeting, so you were, you're okay. This is only from the last meeting.
Gotcha. I thought they were presented at the last public, and yes.
Mrs. Mordecai?
Yes.
Vice President Robertson?
Yes.
President Charles?
Yes.
Reports from the board members. Mr. Halper, do you have anything?
Yeah, actually, today was the start of Kindness Week at Gregory, so I was out there for the Great Kindness Challenge with one of the Air Force ROTC heads from here at the high school and a few police officers, and it was great. We had signs that said Smile and Good Morning, and, you know, they do it every year over there and it's fantastic. Oh, and one of our music teachers over there, Ms. Gibbons, was wearing the Gregory School Eagle costume, and it's on Instagram and she was pretty great. I think she's doing it again tomorrow.
Mrs. Mordecai, anything?
Sure. Just like to make an announcement on behalf of the West Orange African Heritage Organization. As you may know, they offer tutoring services at all our elementary schools. They are having a scholarship fundraiser on February 9th, and it's a black and white dance, and the funds go towards a scholarship that they present every year in June at the Men Who Cook picnic. The black and white dance will be held February 9th at the VFW Hall on Eisenhower Parkway in Roseland. Tickets are $35, and of course, you have to wear black and white. So, hope people will turn out. Also, another announcement, this past Saturday, I attended the New Jersey School Board Association meeting in Trenton in my role as president of the Essex County School Board Association, and we were updated on various legal updates for the upcoming administration and a couple things that we were told. For their first education meeting this Thursday, they'll be voting on a couple of different laws. I'm not sure if it's going to come about, but one thing that they talked about is having full-day kindergarten statewide. Of course, it comes without funding, so we'll see how that works out. And another thing, they wanted to push more recess minutes, so I'm not sure how that will work out either. And so, for each district that has block scheduling, I don't know what happens with that, but they'll be discussing that in the Education Committee Assembly this Thursday in Trenton. And that's it.
Mr. Robertson?
To dovetail, actually, on Mrs. Mordecai, the West Orange African Heritage Organization actually needs tutors for their elementary school tutor program right now. And I see some students out there, you could be challenged by this as well, as Seton Hall Prep is giving 20 kids from Seton Hall Prep signed up to tutor. So, we can't let them beat us, can we? Yeah, I see some smiles there. So, sign up to tutor, contact me, my information's at the website, but we need tutors and we would love to use the great talent that we have here to help our own kids. It'd be wonderful.
Any further?
No, good.
Okay. Two things I attended this past week. One was the Essex County Wrestling Tournament held at the Cody Arena. The team did not perform as well as expected or needed. They finished in the field of 22 teams, they finished about number eight. We did have six or seven kids who placed, Sebastian Rolls, Colin Morgan, James Benjamin, Jordan Naval, Michael Charles, and Edgar Moran all finished in the top seven in their weight class. Yes, my son, Michael. And also, the weekend I spent on Saturday, I went to the hockey game between West Orange High School and Dayton, which was a benefit for the child who passed away. The game ended in a tie, so it was actually my first high school hockey match, hockey game, so it was pretty cool to see it there at the arena. The team looks really, really, really good, so.
I liked the senior night last year.
Did you?
They're decent, they're pretty good.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have. Next on the agenda is, the next board meeting will be held at 6:30 PM on February 12th, 2018, right here at West Orange High School. And next on the agenda is petitions and hearings from, hearings from the citizens on any subject. Please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. Mr. Calavano worked the clock. This is about anything you want to speak about.
Good evening. My name is Lori McCullough, I'm at 15 Ronald Terrace. I am a member of the West Orange High School PTA Executive Board, and I had sent a letter to Mr. Rutske and Mr. Charles. The Executive Board of the PTA, we are proposing a legacy brick campaign to build an outdoor legacy walk as our fundraiser, and essentially, this walkway would be right behind where you're sitting, and we would sell individualized, personalized engraved bricks to parents, students, alumni, community supporters, and businesses. So, in addition to the walkway construction, the contribution of the sales of the individualized engraved bricks would provide grants to students, student clubs, teachers, and high school special projects to promote development, enhance training, and enrichment for the West Orange High School students. So, we'd like to begin immediately. The bricks would be provided by Bricks R Us, which also did the Gregory Centennial Project, and the construction would be done by Abraham &amp; Sons, which is a West Orange business, and they are happy to help us. So, we'd like to begin, if it's okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone further?
Good evening. Robin Aceurles, 22 Yale Terrace. I wanted to thank you, the Board of Ed and President Charles, for having the handouts for the presentations. We've been asking for that for a while. I would say, though, we ran out, so just for consideration of the next time, maybe a few more copies would be very helpful. Last year at one of our events, then-President Mordecai seemed open to the possibility of holding a town meeting where community members might feel a little bit more comfortable sharing their concerns with the direction of the district. So, I would like to ask this board if you would be willing to hold such a forum before you vote on the superintendent's contract on, at the February 12th meeting. I'm pretty sure I will be able to get a lot of community members there. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Hi, Matt Soli, 182 Forest Hill. I just had a question for the board about the Gifted and Intellected Program. It seems the documentation is missing from the website. So, if someone could look into that, that would be helpful.
Next, I'm sorry.
Christopher Diaz, 20 Moore Terrace. This board has three additional weeks to give the issue of the superintendent contract the serious consideration it deserves. You've heard from your constituents, you're aware that they're counting on you to do what's right for this district, to do what's courageous, and to not play follow the leader. The number of reasons to reject extending the contract is legion. But what strikes me as odd is that this contract, as it is proposed, awards a substantial raise. That raise would be immediate, and in essence, what this board is offering, in the way that the contract is written, is a bonus. A bonus at the expense of the West Orange taxpayer, to the tune of $20,000. An award, if you will, for overseeing the Special Education Department that is grossly noncompliant in many areas, for overseeing a failed honors program, a culture of mistrust, disrespect, and misinformation, and the taxpayers receive nothing in return for this. How do you justify this expenditure to the taxpayers? They will be asking. This will be a question that you cannot avoid. I urge each of you to consider the sacred trust that you've been given before you sit at this meeting again on February 12th, and that in doing so, that you will vote no.
Thank you. Next.
Jackson Edwards, 12 Carter Road, 10th grader at West Orange High School. I'd like to propose a boys' volleyball team at West Orange High School, and when I heard that there wasn't a West Orange High, Boys Volleyball Team at West Orange High School, I was kind of surprised because we take such pride in our athletics, and it's pretty surprising that that's not included. But I talked to a person last year, and they said that the one drawback was the Title IX, which is that there needs to be equal opportunity for boys and girl sports, but I heard of a girls' lacrosse team being created, so I was hoping that that would, like, maybe open up a spot for a boys' volleyball team. Also, I know that all sports are costly, but I feel as though boys' volleyball would be a relatively low, lower compared to other sports due to the fact that we already have the necessary equipment for volleyball. And I was also told to prove interest at West Orange High School, so I compiled a petition, and I was able to amass 165 signatures of boys in grades nine, 10, and 11 who would be interested in playing. And finally, to prove that there is competition around our area, there are 18 schools that compete in the Super Essex Conference in boys' volleyball, and those include like Montclair, Bloomfield, Livingston, Melbourne. Thank you for your time.
Orin Levin, 5 Coral Circle. If you can, can you talk a little bit about the recisions at St. Cloud? I noticed a number of the after-school clubs are noted as being recited.
Thank you.
Jennifer Beazer, 82 Lawrence Avenue. I would also be excited to see a girls' lacrosse and boys' volleyball team here. I think those would be great opportunities, branching out additional sports for kids to jump into if they get tired of soccer or baseball or whatever. Back for a minute to the audit report. The good news to me in the audit report is that it seems that my experience has played out here, that we have a really dedicated and enthusiastic staff who are really trying to do their best. But there's a lot that's very troubling in this report, and somehow, we got here. And I hope that in addition to trying to, the plans that you're making to improve this, that you're looking at how we got here and what kind of oversight was lacking and what kind of leadership was lacking to get us here. Finally, back again to the anxiety, social issues part of it, I think that this is something that's really lacking in our school, not just for special ed kids, but for all kids. It's a major issue across the board that has affected my child very seriously, has affected other parents I know very seriously, and it sounds like a snowflakey issue, but it is not. And I think that in addition to training staff to recognize these issues in kids, maybe we need to take a look at what's going on in the classroom and in the school that might be adding to it, with the testing culture, with the demands that are on kids at a very young age, with the lack of recess minutes. If there are structural changes that could be made that would help, and having a, like schools are now having yoga or mindfulness component to help kids learn how to manage their own anxiety on their own. Thank you.
Hi, Joy Burnett, 63, Pilat Place. This is my third This is my third time coming up to just question this issue. I just wanted to know if there is something scheduled for this year, because I was told that it takes time to plan for the diversity and sensitivity training. So, I'm just following up because I haven't heard anything, I haven't gotten anything on my schedule, so I wasn't sure, is there something being planned for this year? And I, it's still a pressing issue.
Thank you. Next.
Jeremiah Salinas, 7 Crystal Ave. I just wanted to know if the board is going to use the zero-based budgeting model for the school budget. Since you're using it for the school budget, are you going to do the same for the three-year contract that you're proposing for the superintendent? Based on these questions, is the agreement efficient? Does the contract really need merit pay? And which criteria are you looking at? Is the public going to know that criteria beforehand? Are the merit pay bonuses necessary, or are they unnecessary? Should they be eliminated or reduced to fund higher priority programs? When you're looking at three years, that's 10 bonuses in a span of two years, actually, I'm sorry, for the criteria that hasn't been established yet, a criteria which everybody has to come into agreement with, correct? So, I hope that the Board of Ed members have done the research on this to make sure that they're being physically, fiscally responsible, and that the students and the taxpayers' priorities are in their best interest as well. You've got to remember, it's a three-year contract that is guaranteed unless an agreement and separation by both parties is made. You know, this is standard procedure, but with the current environment and past history between all the stakeholders, it could be wise for the Board of Ed members to hold off just a little bit before making this decision. That's going to, you know, require more careful thought and planning, just to make sure that we find a happy medium here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel Gordon, 8 Meeker Street. I just wanted to have a point of clarification in terms of the superintendent contract. Does it, I know that it's coming up February 12th, because it didn't come up tonight, but does it automatically renew through 2018 unless, or 2021, unless there is a decision made by March 2018 that it doesn't? So, does it automatically renew? Or will the board, you know, yeah, that's a clarification question. Thank you.
Anyone further? CNN will close the, that portion of the meeting. Mr. Rutske, can you?
Yes, I'll start backwards. Ms. Gordon, the answer is yes to the contract question. I'm sorry, Jeremiah, I missed your last name. Soli, I'm sorry?
Salinas.
Salinas. Yes, we use zero-based budgeting, that is correct. And, and looking at the criteria, the board looks at a lot of different criteria as far as that goes with my contract. Ms. Burnett, yes, we are in discussions with two individual groups for that training before the school year is over. It will have to be modified because we don't have a, where's Ms. Burnett? We don't have a large chunk of time, so we would have to modify and then obviously continue building from what we, we do before the year is over. So, yes. Ms. Bieser, again, nobody is taking the anxiety issues lightly. We agree that there are children with serious anxiety, and we need to help them, looking at all the different components that could cause that anxiety. Certainly, we've looked at how we've gotten here as far as the audit report. You know, when, one of the things that we did prior to is provide the information to the auditors, and they obviously said these, many of these things have been in place for many, many years, going back many, many years. So, we have to look at where we're coming from and where we need to go, for sure. The, the girls lacrosse is something that was discussed with the principal, Mr. Moore, and the athletic director, that's something we're looking at. Mr. Levine, the, the after-school clubs, the recisions are there because people couldn't do certain things, but farther in the agenda, those same clubs are approved by other individuals that are overseeing them. So, the clubs are not changing whatsoever, just the individuals that are overseeing the clubs. Jackson, for the volleyball, I'll certainly reach out to, where is Jackson? It's Jackson Seeler. Jackson and all the students that are here, thank you for coming, first of all. And, and second, we'll have a conversation around, I'd like to, before you leave tonight, if you can give me that list of students, I'd like to have that, and we'll certainly talk to Mr. Moore and Mr. Bligh and sit down and have a conversation. So, I'd like to invite you to be part of that, and maybe a couple other students who are really gung ho on this. So, we'll have that conversation within the next couple of weeks, and then we'll sit down and have those that need to go out and determine costs of things, that there's a process that we go through when we evaluate whether we're going to start a program. So, we'll definitely have that conversation. Mr. Solley, as far as the GNT program, the, the information is on the, where's Mr. Solley? Can you leave? The Gifted and Talented Program information is on the website, there is the parent manual that is up there. Today and tomorrow, the acceptance letters are coming out from the principals for those parents who have children who have been accepted into the program, the Gifted and Talented Program for the grades three through five. Next will be the appeals piece that those parents will receive, those letters in the next few days, and then we will have, the second grade will, will then move down to our second grade students, and then move down to our kindergarten and first grade students as we move along. Ms. McCullough, is Ms. McCullough still here? We, when we had the PTA executive meeting, we had a conversation with Ms. Palamucci, and it sounds like she didn't come back and have a conversation with you. What we explained to her is there's a process that we just sit down and kind of go everything. So, Mr. Moore, we'll reach out to you, I'll come over, we'll sit down. I know you've met with Mr. Moore, then we'll kind of formalize things, and then I'll bring it to the board. So, we'll reach out to you, if not tomorrow, certainly on Wednesday. I believe that's all we have, Mr. Charles.
Okay. Board members, any final comments? Mr. Alpert?
Yes.
You can, but I said.
I said Mr. Alpert, right?
I said no first, he said me first.
I did say Mr. Alpert.
Oh, there's another.
I'll respond. I'll respond. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Charles. Yes, I did say I was open to a town hall when I was president last year, and I believe the board is still open to, to a town hall. But it's, it's deciding what format that will take, because when, when more than three board members are present, we have a quorum, so it's considered a board meeting. I know Mr. Rutske is going to start setting up town halls, but it's mostly administrative function, and two board members at a time will attend. All five of us can't be there. And that's what I said last year. We've just been extremely busy working on quite a few things last year, the three contracts and other things. I want to make a comment about the superintendent's contract. Of course, I'm restricted by a lot, about a lot of it because it's a personnel matter, but I will say that the superintendent's cap and salary requirements are set by statutes. Governor Christie several years ago created that, those parameters, so it's not just, we don't just pick a number out of a hat. So, that's all I'm going to say on that. It's by statute. Okay? And if you look at any superintendent's contract across the state of New Jersey, pretty much everyone's the same, and it's according to the size of your school district, whether or not you have a high school within your district, and if your high school has a certain amount of students, you get a stipend for having a high school in your district, and that's all by statute, and that's public information. Okay?
Mr. Robinson?
To elaborate further, Ms. Gordon asked about, does it renew automatically, et cetera? According to the law, the board has to give notice to a superintendent as to whether or not the board is renewing the superintendent. It's one month for each year of the contract, which in this case is a four-year contract, means that by the end of February, we'd have to inform the superintendent whether or not we're renewing the contract, and which case, if that did not happen, it would automatically renew. That's number one. Number two, in terms of what things Mr. Salinas talked about, considerations that go into contracts and contract criteria, a couple things. Without getting into a personnel matter, which we're bound not to do as a matter of ethics. We do review guidelines from the New Jersey School Board Association, which is helping many districts look at, you know, how to evaluate a superintendent, we use their process, and look at what other districts are doing based on the size of districts. And, and the last time that we went through a, a, a process like this, we actually did it in conjunction with school boards and under their guidance. And there's also a negotiations process that, that takes place, too. Mrs. Mordecai and I are on a negotiations team. So, there are discussions that go on with the superintendent and with the board to determine, in addition to looking at what caps are a matter of statute, because the salary cap, as Mrs. Mordecai pointed out, is a matter of statute. We look at what other terms may enter into an agreement, whether it is looking at merit bo, merit opportunities for bonuses, whether qualitative or quantitative, et cetera. And yes, we do also listen, we listen to our public, and we appreciate the courage it takes you to get up to the mic and to raise issues, and, and to express how you feel and what your concerns are, and we encourage you to continue to do that. Regarding also the town, a town hall meeting specific to this purpose, the board would have to discuss that, and, and Mrs. Mordecai, we'll, we'll backtrack in terms of the criteria for a town hall. There may be ways to hold a town hall whereby it is an open public meeting where, where we can actually have a quorum, but we'll go back and discuss that and review that with our rep, who's actually in Ireland today, to review what the criteria are for something like that. Whether or not it could occur before February 12th, I would not make any promises or, or suggestions that it, that it would. And we would have to have that discussion as a board and decide as a majority of the Basically, beyond that, I'd have to be careful because I'd get into areas that are under ethics, would potentially violate ethics pertaining to the confidentiality of personnel matters. But there are processes that are standardized, there are criteria that are widely looked at and taken into account. I hope that satisfies your question, that's about the best I can do it under advice of counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Just, just to close out, I know President, last year, when Sandra was president, and she had spoken to us about, as a board, about hosting the, the town hall, I was certainly in favor of it then, I am certainly in favor of it now as well. I think I even came up with the name, I think, I think I called it Breakfast with the Board. I think that was, that was, that was the name, I floated around. So, it's just a matter of working out the logistics.
Coffee with the Board.
Coffee, but see, it didn't rhyme, though. See, it's Coffee with the Cops, so I was Breakfast, so, anyway.
She's looking for the alliteration.
Yes.
That's what he was going for.
I did coffee with the Board.
Yeah, it can't potentially be done, and let's, also, to understand, when we conduct the board meeting by, by statute and by, and by intent, the board meeting is, well, it gives us the opportunity to hear from our citizens, from our parents, from our teachers. Under statute, the primary reason for the board meeting is for the board to conduct its business, to, whether it's approving bills, contracts, personnel, and et cetera. And yet, and there's always an open public meeting hearing portion. What I would like is to go back and to explore as a board, is under, given the requirements for an open public meeting, and the, and, and having a quorum, can we in fact just combine the open public meeting with a town hall meeting and have everybody there and still have open discussion? So, we're going to go back, we'll meet with our, our New Jersey School Board's rep, consult with legal, et cetera, and see what we can do. But we desperately, I would like to say, we desperately need a greater dialogue in a town hall meeting, and we all are really, all for it. I mean, the, the dialogue is needed, the exchange is needed, we need to listen more, and we need to have a, a broader discussion, not limited to three minutes on a time clock.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Anybody, that's, okay. If no further comments?
Just one other comment. And this is something, going back to what Ms. Bieser was talking about earlier, having once, both experienced this personally, but also having in my former life been a psychiatric social worker, I do think that in looking at what our students experience in anxiety and, and depression, and their social emotional needs, that from a health curriculum standpoint, we really need to take a second look and, and a deeper dive at how to help our students explore what their needs are, what they're going through, and even things like the impact of, you know, of smartphones on social emotional well-being. There's so many things we need to explore, where I feel we need to better educate our students, as well as better educate and better train our general ed teachers. And it should happen earlier. I think it frankly, that these discussions need to happen as early as elementary school. So, again, like at some point, whether it's in the strategic plan process, or whether it's as we explore curriculum on an annual basis, take a real, a, a hard second look at how we can better meet the needs of our students, because whether it's reading the Time Magazine article about how anxiety, depression, and, and many of the social emotional concerns are in fact epidemic nationally, or, or listening to our own kids and their friends about what they're experiencing, that go far beyond what's maybe being addressed in a, in a classroom or a health or PE class, we have to dig deeper, there is a greater need, and we shouldn't have to wait for, you know, a show on Netflix to scare us into having a, a deeper conversation. There's much more that needs to be done. Also, to Mr. Jackson? Awesome. I, I just think you're so courageous for coming up here, doing what you're doing, that is, keep doing it, glad you went out and did that, and it's things, it's, it's actions like that that led to our ROTC program's existence. It's that kind of entrepreneurial spirit, social activism spirit and courage. And I appreciate all, all your, your friends and colleagues here who stepped up with you to make this happen. I applaud your efforts, and we'll do everything to support you.
Okay. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.